Okay.
Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, April 4th. We could all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Robertson, could you call the roll?
I would be happy to call the roll, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan is absent. Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
Myself, yes, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett?
Present.
Six members present. A quorum.
Thank you. Item three, approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Hugo makes that motion.
Hugo makes the motion?
Hold on just a moment. Yes, Mr. Limada?
Sent out an email, Mr. Supervisor, earlier today. We just got something in in regards to the DPW and fire station project that would require us to approve, to move forward with some wetlands changes. It'd be a change in our contract. And so if the board has had the time to review it, or if you're comfortable with having that conversation tonight, I would respectfully ask that you guys consider putting that on your agenda. If not, then it'll just come up in two weeks if you guys haven't had time to see it, or you're not comfortable with taking a look at that yet.
Ms. Hugo, would you accept, were you amenable to adding that as item seven B?
Yes.
Okay. How about you, Mr. Fike?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the approval of the agenda as amended.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have language for a motion, Mr. Limada, on that? I'm just asking for future purposes here.
We'll make sure we have some before we get to that.
We need to write it down. You know me, how I feel about...
We'll do it as the board will consider a motion to approve the change in contract in the amount of $12,500 for the Eagle Wetland permitting.
Okay. As long as you've got the verbiage down, okay. All right, so again, agenda as amended.
Motion by Hugo.
As amended. Motion by Hugo, supported by Fike. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to public comments. If anybody wishes to make public comment. Okay, see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the board and I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion if you wish.
Okay. Support by Ms. Hugo.
Support by Hugo. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item six, under old business. Item A, strategic plan update regarding the DPW and fire station projects. We have our DPW director, Mr. Sears, with us.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Wanted to give you a quick update on our progress with the new DPW and fire facilities tonight. So to date, we have finished the preliminary schematic design for the new facilities. So basically what we've done is we've created a preliminary floor plan, vetted that with our employees and our administrative staff, and against our previous studies that we've done on our facilities, and we think we're pretty solid on the floor plan. We've also established what some of our site plan features are going to be, are make sure we have enough parking facilities for everybody, make sure we have dumpster enclosures, landscape trees, all that kind of stuff. So and like the site circulation is appropriate for our large vehicles that we have. Also, we've put together some exterior schemes thus far, some very preliminary stuff that we're still working on. I know Scott and Dennis have had the opportunity to review those yet, but it's not quite ready for mass distribution. So we're still working on that stuff. So that's exciting that we're past that phase and we're getting ready to move into more of a design phase. We're moving forward with geo textile surveys, so we're going to do some soil borings on a property. That'll be happening here within the next couple of weeks. Also, what we're going to talk about later on, we're getting ready to move forward with wetland permitting. So basically, we just have to file for a permit with Eagle, the state of Michigan, to be able to build on those wetlands that we've identified. So we think that's going to go pretty smoothly. It's pretty informal from what we've currently do with water and sewer projects. So we don't think it's going to be much different than that. Our construction manager right now, Frank Weewald and Sons, is finishing up the first iteration of their estimate based on what our preliminary schematic design is. So tomorrow, Dennis and I will sit in a meeting and Chief Burdette to review that initial estimate, and then we'll make modifications to the plans based on what our budget is so that we can meet our budget from there. Hopefully, we're close to target. We know we're probably a little bit over, but I think we have some opportunities to adjust if we need to, for sure. And then we're pretty much, that's it. We're still on schedule for a late fall or late summer, early fall groundbreaking. Hopefully, we'll stay on schedule. We're taking a slight pause from the design work so that we can review that estimate and make sure that we make all the necessary adjustments now rather than when it gets too late. And that's the big reason we brought on the construction manager so early in the process was so that we could get a good educated opinion on where we're at budget-wise before we get too deep into the design.
Any questions for Mr. Sears? Okay, sounds like we're making progress.
We are. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, next item is the ARPA funding. And Mr. Limada?
So we included the, obviously, again, the amount that we received hasn't changed, $3.8 million. The next report is due from me at the end of April. What we have to do in there is include all the projects, the amounts paid to date, so they can see, and then again, anything that we have dedicated, so they see the total dollar amount, make sure we're spending it as appropriate. And we didn't, we used the venue of replacement revenue, which allowed us much more leeway than just sticking to infrastructure projects, although if you look at where we're at, primarily, it's been infrastructure projects. Again, the biggest one to date is the fire station number two remodel, which has started, and we are in the process of. They tore off the old vestibule on the side of the building. The ground is being prepared now for footings to go in to move forward. We've had a few meetings to review some items, some change orders. The most recent one had been presented at about $20,000. We had them go back and revisit it. It came back in at about $12,000. But some items that have been missed, like updating all of the ceiling tiles. We don't want to keep the old ones in there. We want to make sure that when we're done with this project, the whole thing is, looks good, is new. There were some things with some doors, but we feel fairly confident we will have that. Fire station number two will also be key-carded, just like the police department in this building is. So we'll have that consistency throughout. We're moving along very well. Looking forward to seeing that building, and I think we're still on track for a completion that we believe will be in September of this year.
Very good.
The other things that we've completed with those ARPA funds, obviously, projects that are complete were the barn reservation out at Parks and Recreation, the land improvements for the pedestrian bridge over the drainage ditch out in the nature trails. Other than, there was a small retainage left for Waldorf on that one, just to make sure that turf establishment and everything was done. That'll be done this spring. The hazard pay retention bonus was paid out. It was $237,000. We still have a small amount as part of the contractual obligations to the police contracts to be paid out in 2024, in January of 2024, which will be dedicated, allocated out of there. The cameras for the interview rooms, and of course, the recently completed purchase of the South Dort Highway property on campus. Scott and I signed off on those and brought the check in, so that purchase is complete as of last Friday afternoon. They have 30 days to finish removing all of the items from the buildings and on that property. I told them that I could potentially give them an additional two weeks if they're going to get all the wood off. They have a lot of leftover, just chunks of wood, whatever. If not, we can take care of it. But we did do the Phase One and Phase Two environmental studies. The reason I moved forward with Phase Two is I didn't have a great deal of concern based upon what our projected uses are for the property, but there was an old report from the 90s, Eagle investigation, BEQ at that time investigation, into a report from an employee that they had dumped some pesticides on that property back then. So I thought it was prudent that we went through with the Phase Two studies. If, based upon the results of the Phase Two studies, we felt that they needed to file that BEA for environmental assessment, that there could be potentially cleanup, we would have done that. It didn't rise to that level. The contaminants that they found were all minor and surface-level contaminants. They had no concerns whatsoever, and the one thing that was important for the township to know is that by doing both the Phase One and Phase Two environmental studies, that we are protected moving forward from any financial liability of the cleanup. The sellers would be responsible for that. So that's signed, sealed, delivered. It's ours. Doesn't look like much right now, but if you look at Playland didn't look like much when we bought it. This property doesn't look like much, but we're slowly but surely making a big difference on that South Dort Highway entrance to our property, and it's going to look a heck of a lot better when we're done here.
Absolutely. Any question for Mr. Limada on that? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Limada?
That's it.
Okay. The taxable value things coming up later in the meeting, you know? Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to new business. And item A, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of SCADA equipment and installation of the new pressure-reducing valve at the Grand Blank Enterprise Park for $14,548 from UIS SCADA Inc., and authorize the township superintendent to access all related contracts and documents.
Hello again.
Hello.
So we've talked about this pressure-reducing valve, it seems like a million times now before the board.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things, we discovered the need for it late. So we're kind of piecing it together as we go, making sure that we get all the engineering and design right. I don't want to just, you know, bring stuff to you very quickly and get it done and realize you need to come back later. So to date, we've approved the design work for it for Row, which they've almost have completed. They'll also get that permitted through the county and the state if necessary. We've approved the purchase of the actual vault and valve itself, so that is in production. Hopefully, we'll get that delivered sometime early summer. Now, we're approving the SCADA equipment to go along with the vault. Two separate vendors. We purchased the vault from a different company. UIS is our SCADA vendor. They designed, built, and maintain our SCADA system. So the SCADA equipment basically will allow us to obtain data from the station in real time. It'll tell us what the pressures are on either side of that valve. It'll also allow us to control that valve remotely. So if we need to open it or close it in the case of a fire, or, you know, a leak or something, we can do that remotely. We don't have to physically enter the vault to do that, which is a confined space. We want to try and do as much as possible. So tonight, my assistant director, Greg, wrote this up. We're asking for $14,584 to purchase the SCADA equipment from UIS SCADA, and they will install it also once the valve is, the valve is installed in the water system.
Questions, concerns? Mr. Fike?
Did I hear you say, Jeff, that you have to build a lake?
A lake?
Yeah.
No.
No, all right, that I misheard.
No, not a lake. It's...
Where will this thing be? In a building?
It's a panel outside of the building.
Isn't this the thing that keeps the water from flowing backwards?
The valve is, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. The SCADA equipment controls, or it controls the valve, and it gives us real-time information on what the valve's doing, what position it is, and what the PSI is on either side of it. So it's in a stainless steel cabinet just outside of the vault itself.
Sometime, maybe our board can take a look at some of the screens in...
Yeah, absolutely.
Your office, or Greg's office, and just see how that's...
We could pull it up in here one time.
Okay, that'd be good.
Absolutely.
Basically, can show you how much water's in one of the towers.
Yep. Pretty amazing stuff.
Crushers, all that stuff, right?
Yeah, and it was state-of-the-art when I came here, almost, you know, well, a little over eight years ago. It's getting a little outdated now, but it's still really cool to see compared to what other communities have or don't have.
Even the flow of sewage, you can see the levels and...
Yep.
What have you.
It's good stuff.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Sears?
No.
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion? You have Mr. Fike?
Motion by Fike?
Supported by Mr. White?
Supported by Mr. White. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
I didn't mean to make everybody think you can actually see the sewage.
We have those videos also.
We've got those, right.
Enjoy those videos, buyer.
The new camera truck can get some real good shots, right, that we just got. But yeah, just the flow is what...
Okay.
...the level. Okay.
Moving on.
Seven, item seven B.
Okay.
We had addition, and Mr. Sears, you want to speak of that?
Yeah, so I sent everyone an email this morning talking about a wetland permit that we need to obtain for the Playland property in order to construct on it. So back when we demolished Playland, we did a wetland survey then, and the wetlands were not as big as they are now, basically. What we have found is, back where the building, if you remember that building at all, there was a walkout basement and a big deck with a restaurant and stuff. Where that walkout basement was is a low area. And when we graded the property, we graded it flat, but we didn't fill the property in yet because we didn't know what we were going to be doing with it. Well, Eagle, our wetland company, came back and said, "Well, it looks like wetlands to us." It's not pristine wetlands. It's not going to cause us any issues. It just means we have to have a permit to build on top of it. So the proposal we have tonight from DAG Group, who's our architect, they'll use Fleece and Vanderbrink, who is their civil engineer, to go through the wetland permitting process so that we can, you know, do what we need to do to be able to build on that site. If it means having to adjust the buildings one way or another, we can always do that. We have lots of room over there. It's pretty routine. We just actually completed a wetland permit for our Grand Blank Road BiPass Sewer. Took us about six weeks to get done. So we're doing it at the right time. You know, we still have several months before we're going to start construction. So what we'll do is we'll have a pre-application meeting with the people at Eagle, and, you know, they'll look over our report. They'll tell us what they think is going to happen, what they think are wetlands and what they think, you know, probably not. And then we'll put together a formal application, submit it to them, and, you know, we'll go through all the process after that, so.
So...
Mr. Supervisor, for me? Yes.
Okay. And I may ask you to update this language, but a motion, okay, so we have a motion to approve what? $12,500?
I think Mr. Limada has the language.
Mr. Limada?
I think if you do it as a motion to approve a change order to Detroit Architectural...
I'm writing this down. Hold on. A change order to...
Detroit Architectural Group, or DAG.
DAG.
Okay.
In the amount of $12,500.
Okay.
For the purposes of wetland permitting work.
Okay. We're capturing this on video, so I can, but thank you. You know how I am about doing motions and resolutions on the fly.
Had I really thought this through, Mr. Clerk, I would have sent that proposed motion in advance, so I apologize.
No, no, there's no apologies necessary. We're very adept here. We can handle it on this occasion. Okay. Okay, very good. So in light of that, since we have the language now, I will make the motion. How's that?
Very good.
All right, and...
Hugo supports it.
Ms. Hugo supports. Okay, trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, under future agenda items, do we have a schedule? We're going to stick with that. I'm not sure what's coming up next, but if anybody had anything that popped up that you feel we need to have one of the meetings, we can always entertain that as well, or see me after the meeting. Yes, Mr. Fike?
I just have a question, a general question.
Yes.
I guess it's for Dennis. You know, in light of possible severe weather tomorrow, not, you know, nothing's going to happen, probably. But if ever the big one hit Grand Blank Township, do we have a plan, an emergency plan for what would happen?
We do. First, I start running through the building like my hair's on fire. No. We actually do have a storm shelter in the building. Sometimes we joke about this old armory building and, you know, the multiple changes. We've got a high ceiling in here, not that you can see it here, but, you know, up there and how we've put so many walls in and moved them out through the years of all the changes we've made. But in the middle, back in this building, where the old holding cells were when this was the police department, those cement block walls in that section of the building go all the way up to the ceiling. That is our designated storm shelter for this building, where we have to bring all the employees into the area that we know is safe in that section. So we have that. Then, of course, we also have the tornado sirens for the general public, that when they go off, that's a signal that tornadoes are imminent and that they should seek cover in the lowest level, under a stairs or along a brick wall.
And we have a plan that we file with the county, what, every couple of years or every five years for like, you know, natural disasters or huge...
What happens? Who springs into action?
Who's in charge?
We have a, we have, our phones are on a plan that automatically give us precedence if something were to happen, so that if the cell towers are limited and it automatically allows us to have cellphone access, goes to first priority one, so that we can still communicate.
Good to know. There is a plan, just in case.
Right, no, it's, good question. Yes, it's a pretty in-depth plan that gets filed every few years and...
Thank you.
Okay, so board reports. Anything with planting and zoning, Ms. Hugo?
No, our April meeting was canceled, and our next meeting is scheduled for May 4th.
Okay. Mr. White, anything with planting?
Our April meeting is also canceled.
Okay. Mr. Fike?
No, nothing to report.
Mr. Kilmer?
No.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, Clerk Robertson?
No, sir, nothing to report.
Okay. Just a few items. I don't know if I mentioned this, but in the last couple of weeks, we've received a phone call from back to the Bricks Group, and they're going to be hosting the 70th anniversary of the Corvette rolling off the line in Flint. That's actually going to be held at the GMSPO Building off Grand Boulevard, and I believe it's the end of June. We'll get more information out on it. But we're trying to work with the road commission and the properties over there to try and get that paved real quick. We'll see if we're able to accomplish that. But I know Mr. Sears and a couple of, and Mr. Limada, probably be meeting with the road commission on, do something with that. Also, on the road issue, if any of you hear about Gibson, I know it floods out occasionally. Actually, the road commission evidently secured an easement for being able to drain that, and they're wanting to meet with us to get that signed so they can move forward on getting rid of that problem. That's been an ongoing issue. Our beautification effort, we're going to have a meeting here on April 11th at 5:30, and we're looking for volunteers. We're out looking for sponsors right now for various intersections. Our plan is to do plantings in the right ways of several of the intersections where people are entering into the township, whether it's Saginaw Street and Baldwin, or the roundabouts at Grand Blank and Dort, Hill and Fenton, so on and so forth. So Robert's been working on planters for along Saginaw Street here. Lots of things going on with beautification for the summer. Just a couple other quick items. 911, I received a message that they're going to, the vice chair of the board called a board meeting for next Tuesday, so we'll see what's going on with that. We're continuing as a township to do our homework on that issue as well, and you'll probably be hearing more from us here in the next few meetings. Myra Technology had their grand opening ribbon cutting out on South Holly Road. Really interesting business that is a high-tech manufacturing facility that manufactures circuit boards for anything under the sun that needs a circuit board, and pretty interesting stuff. All clean manufacturing, where, you know, the air can't have any dust in it whatsoever, so it's kind of like going into surgery, just going to the manufacturing area, but very nice building, nice manufacturer to have here in the township with some high-paying jobs. What else? One question I had that we, several of us are going to be attending the MTA conference on the 17th, starting on the 17th, and I noticed we have a board meeting on the 18th, and there's going to be three of us gone. I don't know if we want to reschedule that board meeting or have it without us. Thoughts, Mr. Limada?
We purposely let all the department heads know that it was going to be a very light agenda for the meeting of the 18th. We do need, obviously, a quorum.
Right.
I know that at least...
Three of us.
Three of you will be at the MTA educational conference, so as long as the other four are committed to being here, we don't have to change the time or anything else. Just count on it being a very brief meeting, pay the bills, and take care of any emergency-type of motions that we would need to address.
And don't pass anything just because we're not here.
Nope.
Okay, we'll keep a schedule then.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have. And with that, how about turning, anything?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Mr. Limada?
At all of your places, you'll see the update from the March Board of Review. Should have been in front of you. If I missed you, let me know, and I'll S. one down. But the reason we do this is we track going back to '94, which we considered our base year, and started looking at how we've done. It's interesting to note when we hit the recession back in 2007, and what happened in the precipitous drop, and then how long it took us to get to that taxable value. Again, was a long time, but now you take a look at the growth we've had, and 2022 was really unprecedented with, you know, a $251 million increase in our SEV, a $122 or nearly $123 million increase in our taxable value. That's important because when our taxable values are rising, obviously, it shows that we're being successful and moving forward. This one was more because, or was higher, directly attributed to the state tax commission, the treasurer deciding that there was going to be a 5% increase in taxable values this year. Again, we can only increase taxes, taxable value, at 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. This year, inflation was above the 5%, so for the first time since this was adopted in the 90s, we actually had a 5% increase in taxable value. So for all of us homeowners, as we received our tax bills for the year, and we say that darn township raised our taxes again, that 5% increase went on every single property in the state of Michigan, had nothing to do with Grand Blank Township. You can't opt out of it. It's what's driven by treasury. And again, that's part of, you know, the tax changes in the 90s that really, you know, this is the first time we've ever seen that 5%. So it's kind of shocking to see that 5%. But it's also because we had a ton of commercial growth. Not everybody grew $251 million in SEV last year, I can assure you, thanks to Grand Blank Enterprise Park out there with Fessler Bowman moving forward. Again, those buildings aren't complete, but however much they were complete on December 31st, we captured, so that got included in the March Board of Review, the tax roll that we've submitted to the county. that we've submitted to the county. And so this means our revenue is, we're going to see some nice revenue increases moving forward as we start to bill our township out in December's taxes. So we look good for 2024 and moving forward. Of course, you know, it just depends on the economy, and that's why I like to point out with this whole sheet, when you see all those reds. We can drop in a hurry, folks, and that's what I don't think people understand. It's really hard to come back because we are held to 5% of the rate of inflation. When inflation was so historically low at 1% or less, we can't grow back like we had. So we can lose 35% of taxable value overnight as home values drop. But it takes us eight years or more to claw our way back out of that, to get back to the taxable value we had. And when you look from when we dropped in 2007, or where we were in 2007, and we didn't get back to that number until 2021, that's 14 years of clawback trying to get, in spite of all the new growth, all the new homes, all the new, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of new residential homes, new commercial development. It still took us 14 years to get back to the taxable value, so the same revenue stream that we had. So these increases look nice, but just, you know, when the economy is a fickle monster, and if it goes the other way, we could lose that overnight. This is great news for us, quite frankly. This is really great news. It shows we're being very successful. A lot of this is due to commercial growth, and so it's to be celebrated.
Absolutely.
What was the, you mentioned $251 million in SEV. What was the taxable value increase?
123, nearly $123 million.
Yes, but what was the?
$123 million.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Certainly. We also had a new employee start today. Her name is Megan Keely. She is going to be our newest employee in the assessing department. So we finally are fully staffed in assessing. Great news. We're looking forward to Megan's contributions. She had had some experience through a very unique program where she got to bounce around into different communities as an internship and see how different people did. And so she had a lot of exposure. She had her MCAT, and now she's going to be working on her Level Two moving forward. So we're really happy to have her here and looking forward to her getting started. The PFM meeting that we talked about getting in May, we couldn't come with a date that would work, especially with the 18th. And three of you being out, we thought it'd be best to have everybody here. So we did schedule that, I mean, for April. So if we scheduled it for May 16th, that Michael Berry will be here from PFM to answer your questions. Clerk Robertson and I had a conversation about MERS and our investments with MERS. And I'm also going to extend an invitation out to our representative, Matt Taylor, from MERS, to see if he wouldn't be able to attend the same meeting. And if we're going to have a conversation about our finances and our investments, might be a great time to have MERS here as well.
Sure.
And then finally, May 12th, golf outing. Sent out the flyer to everybody. If you're a golfer, or if you're not, May 12th, it is our first inaugural fundraiser for Parks and Recreation. It's out at Sugar Bush Golf Club in Davison. I've never golfed out there, but I have been out there to eat. The food was great. It's going to start with a shotgun start at 9:00 AM. If you think about putting a team together, and, or if you know some neighbors, friends, whatever, we still had about 25 spots available, May 12th, tee time at 9:00 AM. And that's all I got to say about that.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Limina?
Nope, that's it.
Is the motion to adjourn in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Then I will make the motion, and-
Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Ms. Hugo will second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
We are adjourned at 7:34.